Okay, so this is a study session for an FDP application for the hotel in the Bay Street project. If you may recall, the Bay Street PUD, PDP approval happened in 1999. And as part of that, PUD approval, it included a 250-room hotel and two retail paths which were not built as part of the Bay Street development, which contains, you know, retail, entertainment, and residential. So during that time, these two features were not built. One of the retail paths located at the south was built in 2009, and I think some of the commissioners may remember that would be the West Elm Furniture Store. So the second retail pad site at the northwest corner of Christie Avenue and Schelmond Street remains unbuilt. This is an FDP application for the hotel only. So this is Schelmond, and these are the railroad tracks. So the site we are, and this is Bay Street Development, and so the site sits right here. And this would be the hotel site, and this would be, the one fronting Schelmond would be the future retail pad that I was speaking to, which is not part of this application. And behind this is the vacant, the famous or the infamous Site B. And we're not talking about Site B today either. In terms of operating characteristics, the hotel would be franchised as a Hyatt Place brand. Ensemble Hotel Partners, which is who are the applicants here, will franchise the Hyatt Place brand from Hyatt and hire a management company to operate the hotel. So the applicant will be only building the project and not managing it or operating it. The target population here for the hotel, business and leisure travelers in Emeryville and the surrounding area. It will be a 24/7 operation, and it'll be running throughout the year. It is a 169-room hotel, and it includes meeting room, fitness room, an indoor pool, and a bar, café area. So this is the site plan. As you can see, this is the hotel site right here. It fronts the railroad tracks here. This is Christie Avenue, Bay Street here. You have Gap here, just to remind you. And the retail pad here is for, as I mentioned again, is not a part of this project. So in terms of how the circulation would work is that auto traffic would enter through here. They can exit around the site. There are some 40-plus parking spaces behind, and they can exit through the second exit and entry here. So there are two entry points and exit points to the hotel. And you can see a roundabout that is to facilitate both the hotel and the future retail development that goes in there. In terms of parking, in addition to this 40-plus parking spaces on the ground level, the remainder parking will be provided in the parking garage on top of the residential apartments which are on this site. So looking at the floor plans itself, Christie Avenue right here, and you have the pool, conference room lobby is here. This is, the one in gray is back of the house, and this is the café-bar area. This is a typical second-floor plan. It has 31 rooms, as well as a fitness room that is right here, and this would be open to the lobby below. Three-to-six floor plans are mainly, you know, typically shown here, and each floor has about 35 rooms, and there are different mix of suite types, which I suppose coincide with what Hyatt Place has in all the other places that they have hotels. This is the rendering of the hotel. I am not going to talk too much about design, as one of our, we hired a consultant to talk about the design, and Sudhish, and his name is Sudhish Mohendru, some of you may be familiar with him. He will be talking more in detail regarding the proposed design. So I'm going to jump straight into what it, whether the project is in compliance with applicable regulations. So like I mentioned, this is a part of the approved South Bay front of the Bay Street PUD PDP. And this will sound familiar to you, very similar to the Marketplace study session that we had in December. In order to approve an FDP, the commission must make the finding that the proposed FDP substantially conforms to the PDP. The approval was for a 250-room hotel with a height of up to 200 feet. The approval also allowed a residential unit to be substituted for a hotel room and vice versa. So when the residential component of Bay Street was under construction, they added 29 more units. This they were allowed to do by reducing the size of the hotel. So the maximum hotel size that can be on this site is 221 rooms. However, the proposed hotel is smaller, 169 a room with a height of 69 feet about, with a parapet extension of five feet. So clearly, it conforms to the approved PUD and the PDP. And of course, the location of the hotel is also where the PDP showed it to be. One of the conditions of approval of the PUD was to allow sharing of parking with retail users, provided that a parking management plan is submitted. So the applicant would be, would need to demonstrate that and submit a parking management plan when they file a formal application. So at that time, we would be checking whether there is sufficient parking for the proposed use or not, and how that would be managed and operated. This went to the internal DCC meeting, and one of the main comments was that the design needed improvement. And as a result of that comment, that led to us hiring a design consultant, and he will, be hearing from him shortly. The other comment was that was noted that the project lies in the pedestrian priority overlay zone, and so the sidewalk width along Christie Avenue would need to meet the 12-foot requirement. There was a concern about the project's impact on the future retail pad and Site B. Suggestion was made to provide, that the applicant provide some form of interim treatment for the retail pad, since at this point, we do not know of any application that are pending or being talked about regarding the retail pad north of the site. I did go to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and they felt that the site was an appropriate area for a car-share program, that a bike rental or a bike-share facility should be included within the project, and that the number of bicycle parking spaces that they ultimately provide should be twice the city requirement. This increasingly seems to be their standard recommendation on all projects. There was a community meeting that was held on January 7th in the community room at the Bay Street complex. About 15 people were present, as well as Councilmember Davis, and some of you were there, including Commissioners Cardoza, Donaldson, Keller, and Tan. One of the comments that was made was the need for a more impressive design, need for treatment for the blank rooftops, such as the green, such as green roofs. And remainder comments are more outlined in the staff report. In addition to hiring a design consultant to work with the applicant on design itself, we will be hiring two more consultants to do a traffic analysis, which would also include parking analysis, as well as photo simulations for the project, so that the commission can see how the proposed project looks in context of other buildings in the surrounding area. The main issues to be considered, and from what we need your input from, is, well, the design, I'm sure you will be giving us plenty to think about on that sidewalk. Would the commission want to see a 12-foot sidewalk along north side of Christie Avenue between Schelmond Street and the railroad track? And would the commission desire to see an interim treatment for the retail pad as part of this project, and if so, what kind of treatment? So that concludes my portion of presentation. I'm going to invite Sudhish to talk about the design, and after he's done, we will be available for any questions. So Sudhish? So you can just scroll down?
Good evening. Sudhish Mohendru with SCFM Design Studio. I reviewed this project, and I'll sort of summarize my comments here. Let me get, one of the, I've structured my comments in sort of the sequence from the larger picture, distant views, and slowly getting down to the street level as you approach the building. And finally, on the surface treatment and design aspect. So starting from the urban design, starting from urban design elements down to, of course, the visual aspects of the project. One thing I think, I don't think many of us need a reminder that the orientation of Christie Avenue, as you come around Powell Street, and you make a right turn, sort of a sharp left, a right turn over by Trader Joe's, the, that turn then shifts in angle, and that's what you're seeing here, as Christie finally ends at this location. And because of that shift in angle, this particular corner of what I consider an incomplete intersection, by intersection I mean intersection of Christie and Bay Street, the southwest corner being occupied by first of the Bay Street buildings, that currently occupies a furniture store, the northeast, sorry, the southeast corner of the building has the Gap store, and of course, the northwest and the northeast corners being vacant. This particular northeast corner is the most visible element as you turn and approach Bay Street. Before you even get, you cannot see, for example, Gap from, even if you, when you're at the traffic light, because of the angle being such. But this building seems, seems like if you keep going straight, you will run right into the building. So I think it's a very prominent sort of iconic location. And I'm saying that because I think I'm basing my comments, I'm basing my comments with that sort of bar that I like to establish for us to judge this by. Now, and so to that effect, I think that the current design does not seem to pay enough attention or reflect the significant character of this particular corner. Now getting closer to the building, if you, the layout of the ground floor, to me, it seems such that it would be preferable if the more public functions are on the public side. I consider this the public side, because it's going to face, it faces directly across from Gap. It'll face the other retail store. It is the front door of Bay Street, and so it is the most active corner. And so it seems that the meeting rooms, and the restrooms, and the meeting rooms, and the swimming pool, those tend to be a more private function of the hotel. So if you're a regular shopper, you're really not interested in that. While the café that is being shown further north, and perhaps a bar, I'm not sure if there's a bar or not, but that has, there's a tremendous opportunity of that being located at the corner. So maybe some sort of a switching of the plan where some of the less public functions are moved north, and the more public functions are moved south, it would really treat this hotel more as an urban, in an urban context, rather than a freestanding hotel that you would normally find around a parking lot. So I think the plan definitely can help, and which will get directly reflected in the elevation, because the public functions require more glass. The, let's see here. So if you look at this, that's what I meant, that these, to me, are more private functions, special events and so on, and that is more, more public function. The corner of the building has, as it turns out, I think we have wonderful opportunity to treat the corner in a special way. It does seem to, my understanding, there are suites on every floor at this corner, and it would be really nice if we, if the corner was designed in such a way that it had, it was more like a lit beacon, so that it highlights the prominence and so the entry point to Bay Street. In terms of overall design, I'll summarize by saying that some things stood out to me as worth mentioning. The, there is a certain horizontality that you see here in the windows particularly, and like here, for example, which, which to me is not as appropriate as a more elegant vertical appearance, which is what you have at the rest of the Bay Street. So not speaking stylistically at all, but regardless of whether you have a traditional design or you have a modern design, but there's some fundamental elements. The vertical, vertical windows tend to be more related with an urban environment and more dense environment, as opposed to the horizontal related to more of a, sort of a prairie-like stretching-out environment. And I think so this is something that can, can be used to our advantage, to fit in with the rest of the, of the complex, and make this a real, real special place that is contextually connected with all the activity that's around there. The general comment about the exterior treatment, I think, best way to summarize it, because I'm running out of my time, I don't want to take too much time, is that the design seems to, there doesn't seem to be much of a hierarchy in the various elements. And it seems that the elements are sort of stuck on, and they don't quite complete themselves. You don't quite know why the corner element, for example, is having to compete with this element here. So there's a confusion, well, which is the more prominent? Are they two different buildings, or is it this more prominent or that? There are other examples of Hyatt Place hotels, and I believe Miami is one example that comes to my mind, where they have very cleverly used the Hyatt icon, which is this sort of sloping, at the corner itself in one of the hotels in downtown Miami. So I think that the, what I would say simply is that the elevations should be designed in such a way that instead of appearing like there's various things happening somewhat haphazardly, there should be a hierarchy of strong elements, and then other simple repetitive elements. So that way, they're not competing with each other. And of course, the street level will automatically, once the plan is organized, the street level will express itself in terms of where the glass is and where the solid elements are. So Miro, is there anything else? Did I leave anything out, or? I think I've covered everything. Thank you very much.
Would the applicant like to speak now?
Bring mine up here. Perfect. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Conrad Garner with Ensemble Hotel Partners, and we're very excited to be here tonight and have the opportunity to speak to you about this hotel that we look forward to bringing into Emeryville. We understand it's been quite some time since a new hotel's been developed in the city. This is part of an overall general plan that was, as she said, 1999, so 15 years in the making. And we think this is a great site and a great market to be coming into. So again, we're excited to be here. I want to go through the design. I wasn't quite sure how much the staff report would cover some of the items, so some of it'll be duplicate, and I'll move through that quickly and focus on responding to some of Sudhish's comments, if that works for everybody. Just to give a brief history, we're new to the Emeryville city, so as a way of introduction, a little bit about our company. We're over 30 years in the real estate development business, with a long history in hotels. Currently, we have a portfolio of about 1,000 guest rooms. We own and have developed Marriott's and Hilton's, and this would be a venture into the Hyatt Place, but we're familiar with all the brands and the management companies. As Miro mentioned, we're not an operator by trade. We are a developer and an owner, so this would be a franchise, as she outlined. We pride ourselves on quality buildings. We are not a short-term flip developer. All of the properties we've developed since 2009, and the hotels that we started buying back in the early 2000s, we still own. We take a lot of pride in continuing to evolve those and building something that we want to hold on to ourselves. So we plan to do that again here in Emeryville. Just a very quick, this is a Residence Inn by Marriott that we built down in Long Beach, California. One of our offices is in Long Beach. We have two offices in LA and another in Phoenix. This was a Marriott product. This is their extended stay brand, very successful, and very proud of this property. This is a Courtyard by Marriott, which is actually a competitor to the Hyatt Place brand. This is in Philadelphia and just opened two weeks ago. It was minus three with the wind chill when it opened, so little different environment, but we are very excited about this and want to take some of the things we've learned with this select-service hotel type and apply it here in Emeryville to continue to build a better hotel. So we're here to talk about this hotel, and I want to quickly touch on the program. It was 169 originally, as that was submitted back in December. We've continued to refine a few things in the building, and the key count, we call them keys or guest rooms, has gone up by two to 171. It's six stories tall. Hyatt has a café, and it's, I think it's important that we classify it as a café. It's not a restaurant, it's not a bar. It is a bistro-cafe experience. We'll have one meeting room, 900 square feet, an indoor pool, and an outdoor patio that I'm going to focus on a bit farther. I don't need to go through this much, it was already covered. Our intention is to develop this within the development agreement that's in place, to operate within the PDP allowances, and build what this site is zoned for, and get it done efficiently. So I do want to spend a few minutes talking about the brand, because I think it's important to understand what's going to happen on the inside of this building, and then relate that to how the building looks on the outside. So the Hyatt Place brand is in the select-service industry market of the hospitality industry. This is Hyatt's brand family. You can see the Park Hyatt, Hyatt Regency, Hyatt Place, had 167 hotels today. Hyatt is very proud of this brand and aggressively trying to grow it. This is a map, I'll jump to this one, of their growth plan. Back, it's a little bit historic, but this was their plan they outlined in 2006, and they have tracked to 167. You can see that it's focused in large urban areas, and that would be Emeryville, and it's a missing factor here. This is, this is their competitive landscape, so two of these are already in Emeryville, Courtyard and Hilton Garden Inn. And Hyatt Place really strives to come in at one notch higher than these brands and compete at their level, while also providing a bit of refinement in the architecture and the experience indoors. But that is their direct competition. You can see by the number of hotels developed today, they've got catching up to do, and they're working on that. This is just some imagery from the prototype of a guest room. It is a contemporary design, a lot of earth tones. We don't get much flexibility in the rooms to mess around with this. This is the Hyatt brand, and we'll be implementing their brand standards. These are just, again, quick shots. This is what we call a queen-queen, so the two bedrooms. All of the room ties have a nice feature of a little sitting area towards the front of the room. Gives it a sweet feel, while it's not a sweet product, gives it a sweet feel. Again, stand-up glass showers, a desk, credenza, and TV function that provides for the leisure guests, as well as the business guests, which both would be frequenting this hotel in Emeryville. Went through this, I know with Miro, this is the site off Schelmond. We have quite a few constraints on the site, with the railroad tracks to the east being part of the mixed-use development of Bay Street, and working off of the proposed easement between the retail pad and the hotel pad. Some site photos for context, right now it's vacant. This is a shot from Christie. This, again, is just a site plan which everybody was familiar with. I think it's important, too, just to reiterate, that the hotel is going to be responsible for the one-acre parcel that is shown in color there. The rest of it is outside of our control. We are under contract with Madison Marquette to buy that parcel and develop it. They will be building the roundabout, whether it stays a roundabout or some other shape of an easement, and our hotel will marry up to that once it gets developed. Just to touch on parking, the PDP allows for the shared parking, and we plan to take advantage of that. We're all for reducing the car impact. This is, the green is a rough path of travel that we would try to incorporate. A guest would pull up to the Forte Cassier front entry and have the ability to pull right around into some short-term, potentially close to the lobby, but then regular parking, 42 spaces on-site. If none were vacant, they could come down farther east on the site and take a left out onto Christie and go up into the second-floor parking garage, in which we have a reciprocal agreement with Madison for 100 dedicated hotel spaces. There's been a little bit of traffic study in the past, and this entrance is the lowest use for the retail center. It's only got 17% of the entry traffic to Bay Street comes in and out of this Christie entrance, and 23% of the exit traffic. So we plan to not impact that too much. So getting into the design, the ground floor is where we incorporate a series of public spaces required by the brand, along with all the function of the back-of-house laundry service. We have worked this floor plan through the Hyatt Architecture and Construction Review and received approval. Hyatt has bought off on this and approved this through their franchise board, and we, we're pretty excited about it. It organizes the space in which it provides privacy to those going to the pool, because you can come down the elevators here and never have to cross into any of the public traffic, the lobby or anything, and head into the pool. Some people don't want to be on display. And then, and then we have the café operation on the front of the hotel. This is a buffet line that gets entered, opened up in the morning, backs up to the kitchen. That's an adjacency requirement, that that be immediately behind the food service. This is your check-in, the bar down to the side. That bar is where you could have a coffee, a pastry, or they do sell some alcoholic drinks there. Meeting room. And this is a plaza, a patio that we've developed, and I'll hit on that in a little bit. Typical floor again, 35 guest rooms per floor, suites in the corner, as was talked about. These are also considered suites. These are King Studios, they call them. They're a slightly modified version of the typical King, and are liked by the guests. So the, this is our main rendering from the intersection of the Bay Street extension and Christie. The hotel is oriented in this manner for a number of reasons. There's a lot of things to take into account when we're designing a hotel. This site has a lot of context, one being the railroad track. We needed to pull as much of this building away from the railroad track as we could, and so that has put a lot of it up on the front. We also made an effort to respect the future development of Site B, and located a skinny edge, thin edge edge, thin edge, non-impacting to that future development along the property line to the north. We actually feel that this is a pretty good urban statement to have the building edge up against the street. A lot of the current hotels in the market have a sea of parking between them and the street, and that's pretty anti-urban. So this is more in keeping with that mixed-use feel, the retail feel of Bay Street, and allowing the hotel to go more vertical at the street front. Just to walk through our design intent here, the green tower element, which we feel needs to be strong as well, and we like the design we have today, in that it highlights a lot of glass. Our suites at this corner will have incredible daylight and great views down Bay Street. This would be a metal panel system. We have a plaster system on the white areas. The red is intended to be a rustified masonry stone product of some sort. We have some examples of items we're considering today, but it would be an accent material. A lot of glass. This is a signature element by Hyatt. This is a brand standard. There are some cases nationwide where they've granted variances. They are rare. They do try to have this built. This is like the Best Buy wedge. They want this to be their icon. So we've located it right at the front door per their prototype. On the ground floor, we're trying to create a base. You drive under this property twice to access the parking in the back, so the base is important. We have a variety of texture and stone elements. The front would have natural stone on it, the orange burnt color here. We're contemplating either a metal system or potentially a engineered wood system there, and it wraps around the building that you can see as we go down Christie. It's an element that flows throughout the base. This is a rendering from the northeast, looking at the property. We have a low roof in which we don't intend to put any equipment on and actually decorate it with a pattern. That's some of the public space and back-of-house sticks out underneath the tower. The guest rooms on this side are facing east, facing toward the railroad tracks, and we've continued the pattern of color and plaster and accent elements around to that side. We do intend to build some screening to the railroad track to provide knockdown of the noise and some visual elements. It would have landscaping on both sides of that wall. So just some key points on our design, the richness of the material and the color palette. You know, we're trying to come in with a design that is elevated up to a certain level already. We've got less than the typical stucco box. We're introducing the material mixture and colors that we feel works within the context of the Bay Street. We've tried to provide a corner presence and a response to the site characteristics of the railroad track and neighbors, and we need to create that identity. We want people to see the hotel as they come around from Trader Joe's, too, and be able to identify from a distance. This is a quick exhibit in which we studied the height of the hotel and how it fits within the context of the Bay Street current development. You have, of course, the retail on the ground floor parking, and then you have multifamily up above. A lot of variety of colors and textures and moves within the Bay Street complex. We are trying to come in with a contemporary design, but yet have a variety of color and texture ourselves and fit within. This is a zoomed-out elevation height context. To put it in perspective, this is our hotel, Bay Street, Site B, the Powell Overpass. And then over here, we've shown the Hyatt House, and in the background, the Terrace's condo project. So show relation of how close things are together and heights for the entire section. This is a study on the view impact. We know that there's condo properties here and trying to look at how we would be impacting the view, guessing the view is looking towards the San Francisco skyline. The reality is, is our site is mostly out of the view corridor, maybe a smidgen here, but the big impact is obviously going to be whatever's built in Site B. And you already have some visual elements via the courtyard, the office tower here, the Hilton Garden Inn, and the four points, frankly, right in the front here, that are more in the cone of view than our property tends to be. So this outdoor patio, we specifically pulled the building back at this corner to engage the corner, to give this hotel a street pedestrian presence. There's obviously a lot of pedestrian activity along the Bay Street and the retail center. We want to participate in that and give our guests, as well as the general public, the ability to come and use our services, enjoy an outdoor experience. This is on the southwest corner, great daylight. And out there, we plan to have upgraded patio, fire pits, and some dining so that anybody can sit on this corner and dine and activate it. Sorry, these are just a couple imagery, some of the fire pits we're contemplating, some of the patio design. We have a public art requirement of 1% in the PDP, and of course, we'll be meeting that. We do think there's an opportunity to do something here at this corner. There may be an opportunity to run up this wall and do some tall vertical art piece. Maybe it's an installation at the patio level, but we think this corner is a place that can highlight it and allow outside guests, as well as staying at the hotel, to appreciate it. Yeah, this was my last slide. Just to quickly, we did have a good, what we thought was a good community meeting back earlier this month. We heard good constructive criticism about the project. We've tried to respond to those comments and look forward to hearing from the commission tonight about your thoughts on this property. That's very simple presentation. We have the architect with us here today, too. Both him and I can answer questions on it. Thank you. I think I'll put this back up so you can see it.
Now open the meeting to public comment. Please identify yourself and sign in afterwards.
Sure, okay. Hi, I'm Bobby Lee. I'm a homeowner in Bay Street condominium project. I was in attendance at the community meeting as well, and I appreciate everybody's time for coming out and presenting all this information to the residents. There are a number of concerns that were brought up that I'd like to also, again, reiterate and share with the commission. Design, that building corner was a huge, huge part of that conversation during that meeting. The problem that, I lived on this end, on the hotel end of Bay Street, and the problem is when you look down Bay Street, as a pedestrian and as a homeowner, you're kind of struck with this kind of shunted corner where it kind of makes you look away, or you're kind of looking straight at a flat red wall or glass. And just, there could be more that could be done. As Sadiq mentioned, it's a very important corner, and I think there's more that could be done to integrate that. Let's see. There's also a traffic concern as well that I brought up. Coming into the complex, coming up from Christie, there isn't a left turn pocket to turn into the front area of the hotel. And right now, given the way that traffic moves in to the complex and surges, it just takes one car to kind of trip up that whole flow, to stop traffic and have that back up into Shellmount. Another concern was security. There's a public area here on the outside, so there's parking in that kind of cul-de-sac area. Whose responsibility is it to, you know, police loitering, overnight noise, things like that from the area? Which I don't anticipate, but if there is, who would be taking a look at that? And also, finally, as a resident, you know, I'm concerned about construction noise and scheduling, and developers have done a great job kind of describing some of those concerns or alleviating some of those concerns. But as we look at design changes and changes to the way that this hotel is shown or constructed, I wonder if we can keep that in consideration. There's a number of us do work out of our houses, out of our condos and in apartments as well, and construction noise is a big issue. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Tito Young, and this is actually the first time I actually got to look at this design. I actually had the flu during the first group there when you guys presented it before. So you're kind of getting fresh eyes from this, and to all due respect, I feel the building kind of misses the spirit of Emeryville a lot. The corner, that diagonal thing, whether it belongs to Hyatt or Disneyland or whoever you want to belong to, it just doesn't work. And we have an area here that's really special. It's kind of a, it has a long history to it. There's a lot of people that's been in this area, has been in and out of this area. The Peralto's from way back in the 1800s, early 1800s, and then before them. This area was also used to build during World War II. Bits and pieces of what basically made the United States today, or whatever we want to call that. But this project is, if I was to look at this a little, I think it'd be nice to make it a little bit more grander. That ground floor could be a little higher, maybe work for a little, stage it up a little higher than its lane. And then if you're going to have a public space, outdoor space that's out there like that, it's just, it seems like there's 10 seats. And if you know Emeryville, it really does get very full, and there's a lot of people here, and there's a lot of people that would really like to use this space, so why not lift the entire building, kind of like what maybe Corbusier would do, and lift the whole building up over the whole thing? Make the whole ground floor accessible except for a few areas? And bring something rich and enduring. Sure, you're trying to stay with a height line, but I think it'd be nice to give one floor above the height line of the rest of these buildings by a little bit to kind of emphasize the verticality of it. The gentleman who made the remarks in terms of the feeling of the facades and how they're actually composed together, to me, I agree with him. The facades look a little, they miss the windows and the subtractive and the additive spaces just, there's some elements that just don't add up. I like the idea that there's a 1% for the art, and I think that's really great, and I do like the concept of the vertical red wall, but you know, if there was something really beautiful there, that'd be great. It'd be nice to have something on a couple other sides, too, that actually looks great from the opposite side of the building from where I live, the terraces. So I just, I think, I just want to ask this group, the group of commissioners, to really think about letting a project like this go a little further without a little bit more thought on what the facades are going to look like. I do understand, thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to speak? I have a meeting closed. Should we start on the left?
Wow, I get to start tonight. Well, I think overall, it's a great job, and I really do support the project. I'd love to see something built on, continue to build on that area of Bay Street so we can kind of finish off that cap. I really agree. Charlie, have you ever had a design studio do an evaluation like this? I think that was really valuable.
Occasionally. You may recall, for the paper mill, we had a different consultant critique the design. Of course, I was before you arrived.
An investment that's well worth it. I agree with a lot of what he'd said, and I'll get down to that in a few minutes. First of all, I love the idea of shared parking. I think that's something that we really need to do more of, so I'm really behind the whole parking scheme. The only thing I'd like to know is if you guys are planning to do some wayfinding signs so people know where to go so they're not wandering around trying to figure that out. So I just recommend that there's direct access and direct information on how people get to that place. The wide sidewalks, Charlie, I'm kind of having a hard time understanding where this sidewalk that the DCC and the Bike Ped group was talking about, is it on the south facade of the hotel that they want a 12-foot walkway?
Right.
Okay. And knowing my living relationship and who I live with is going to kill me if I say we have shorter sidewalks. But I see that as more as an access sidewalk than, you know, an actual, someplace you would stroll to window shop or something. So if the sidewalk wasn't 12 feet, I'm not really objectionable to that?
I think they were also referring to the extension of that sidewalk out to Shellmount Street, which would go past the future retail pad.
But that's up to the future retail pad, not up to this project?
Well, we feel that that sidewalk should be put in there now so that there's a continuous pedestrian.
Okay, well, that area, I think the room is there and there's nothing built or planned. Put in a 12-foot sidewalk there. Along the building, it looks really tight, and I'd really not like it, you know, to affect the building. If it ended up being eight foot, that's just my opinion. Let's see. Yeah, I think that the whole thing on the bike share, I don't think the East Bay is actually ready for that yet. I definitely support that. I'm a member of Bike Share in San Francisco, but when we do bring that to the East Bay, I think we need to concentrate on partnering with the existing group that's in San Francisco and the peninsula, that we don't create a new competition for that, but we work very closely. I've recommended that with UC Berkeley. They're looking at that as well. And I'm fine with the total of 20 bike parking. I think that's quite a few. I don't know that we need to double that, but that's just my opinion as a biker. I don't know that we need 40 spaces. I definitely support a shuttle service. I would like to see them do that. And the site there, there was some interim issues to be considered in the site of west of this. The other site parcel, does that belong to Madison Marquette?
Which, the retail pad?
What's that?
The retail pad, yes.
Yes. I don't believe that, other than if you want to, you know, have them put in the sidewalk. I don't believe the onus should be on this project to clean up someone else's site and maintain it. I think we need to start putting a little more pressure on Madison Marquette. I'm reading the interim thing. Does the commission desire to see the interim treatment of the retail pad in Site B as part of the project? If so, what kind of treatment? I think we do need to clean that lot up, but I think it should be Madison Marquette's responsibility and not this developer's. This isn't his property. And as far as the design studios, I agree with the parking that he'd suggested. They should enter the property from the forward or first entry, but the rear entry should be exit-only. I don't believe we need traffic going in both ways and causing more problems making two left turns. I'd also like to see if it's possible to put in a turn pocket, because as the resident said, I do see that that's a really short block from the intersection of Shellmount into the property, and if someone is turning left into the hotel, it's going to back people up into the Shellmount intersection. So I'd like to see if it's possible to rework that street so we could put in a left pocket. You look puzzled, Charlie.
No, I agree. I hear what you're saying.
Okay. And let's see. Now, the ground floor, I see what the studio's talking about, about moving that feature of the restaurant and everything up to that corner. Looking at the layout, especially the delivery dock and everything, is that something that's even possible with the back-of-house, or is that going to really cause a lot of problems?
It would cause some challenges. This is the site plan for the ground floor. Yeah, it would, and, you know, we feel like this already provides activation on this corner. And reality, you know, a meeting can turn into a pretty public function, and I don't think having this use in this location will inhibit our facade at all on this side. We'll still have the glass. There will still be entrance and glass on the front. The other thing to balance is, there are quite a few guest profiles that don't want to be on display, per se, along that very busy retail front as they stay at the hotel and eat breakfast. So we try to balance between those who want to go to the public side and those who don't.
So is it possible to, on the inside portion of the lobby where you have some seating areas, is it possible to open that up more to the patio and put more inviting seating in that area? Do you see where I'm talking about, just outside the meeting room?
Here.
You have that area there. Is it possible to open that up more to the patio and create more interaction and make it more friendly?
Well, we intend, the cursor, there we go, we intend to have these as doors.
But I see only one door on the actual lobby side, yeah, right in that area. Only see one door. Could you do like bifold doors, something that would open that up a little more?
Yeah, we absolutely want to be able to open this meeting room and allow a function or some sort of.
Well, not consulting about the meeting room, but the lobby.
The lobby, this one?
I don't see a meeting room as public space. That's a private party or whatever happening in there, but the lobby is, you're trying to convey that as public space. So I'd like to see that more open and welcoming. And the other furniture arrangement, allowing for that to, more interaction, things, if it's not possible. Because I do like the loading dock way back where it is and out of sight, and is that also where the trash pickup would be?
Yeah, we're going to move trash. We drawn it down here, but talking with Public Works and the Waste Department, it will likely move over into the loading zone.
Okay, I'd like that as out of sight as possible. And so that's, I really agreed with his idea of making that more the public area, but looking at the back-of-house, I really saw some complications in that area. But in making that a little bit more user-friendly... So, but in, in making that a little bit more user-friendly, I think that would be good. I do believe, as everyone has said, I think you guys did an admirable job of the corner. I do believe that it can't be better. I think maybe moving the iconic slanted roof in that area, as he said, you know, in Miami, they've done that or something. But I think everybody's asking for that to be a little bit more predominant. It looks nice, but it just looks nice. And I think we could do a lot more with that. The building does look rather suburban and it does have that Emeryville vernacular that we didn't choose. And I would like to see, if you're going to have all these colors, maybe take out one color. I like the idea that you're using other finishes such as the steel and the, and the metal, but it's still having that, to me, these buildings that we build in town remind me of the Sunday comics. It's just all these, we're using articulation and color as architectural features and it's really not. And I think what we're trying to move towards is something more stylistic, something, it could be even more simple. Simple is nice sometimes. It doesn't have to be articulated to be good architecture. So that I would like to see. I think the major hurdle in that same subject is, is coexisting with the Bay Street architecture that's already there. I don't know that we did a really good job with the Metropolitan Apartment Buildings that are above Gap. So I know, I see that as we need to coexist with that, so I, I understand that as a hurdle. And the art piece, I would just hope that whatever we do, it doesn't look like it's an afterthought or something we stuck on. I like the idea of maybe treating that red wall with a piece of artwork, but I'd really like to make sure it's a feature wall and not just an afterthought or something we just kind of stuck on as ornamentation. I hadn't thought of it, but a larger base could be nice if we added a couple more feet to that lobby area and maybe opened the whole thing. I know you probably haven't looked at that and I know that there's costs involved in that, but it's kind of nice if you had a lobby that was maybe 11 feet.
Well, the lobby, just, if I might, just real quick, lobby does have a two-story height area as you walk in. This is, it's not dashed in on this plan, but
Right. You can see it on the entry there.
You can see it on the entry here, excuse me, sorry. Yes, right here.
So maybe if the whole front looked like that or if you just elevated the second floor up 11 feet or something. It's just an idea. It just wasn't something I thought of before, but after hearing that, I thought, well, it could kind of give that a stronger base and a bit of
The ground floor ceiling is already high. Yeah. Yeah, that's, this is, drive underneath it twice. Just to clarify, the ground floor ceiling outside of this atrium will probably be in the 12-foot range.
Okay. Well, maybe, maybe unify it along the whole front to give it
Yeah, as much size as we possibly can. We're going to, we're going to provide 13/6 clear for the fire truck to drive through here.
Okay. And I think that's all I have in case I forget. Well, I'll just chime up at the end.
I also appreciate the consultant coming in. Thank you very much. I, I agreed with a lot of what he said. I think that this building is very suburban in nature. The fenestration is very horizontal. It, it does not have hierarchy and therefore it is confused. And the entrance does not have a ascending feeling in any way. It's, it seems quite trunk and down and squatty. And relatively bland, actually, in my opinion. So it's not, this is not looking urban. It looks like Office Park, basically, is what I'm, what I'm, what I'm reading here. And we want this to be an urban center. So there are things that need to be done. I, I also agree about the corner needing to be more iconic. I think that would be the opportunity for the, the wedge is, it seems like a good one there. I don't really understand, well, not, no, I do understand. But I, I also agree that the, the corner, the Christie and Shellmount corner could be more of a public space, more activated. I don't know if a few tables and a fire pit's going to do it. You actually need, I think that's where the restaurant and bar need to be, in that corner. I realize there's issues with food prep, et cetera, but I'm sure that can be resolved The, the roof going across the floor is, I guess you said you're going to have some kind of color treatment along the
Yeah, the low roof?
The low roof?
Correct, yeah.
That's better than nothing. There, so there will be no equipment there?
There's, there's what?
No equipment?
No.
Okay. Great if it was something that folks would look down on and wouldn't, yeah, would not be an eyesore at least. And I, I definitely love the shared parking. I think that's one of the, the highlights of the project. And I, I am a little concerned about people entering and exiting off that south side. I'm not sure how that's going to work and what, you said there was 17% of the traffic from Bay Street goes in there?
Yeah, it's, it's the least utilized as far as entry to the retail center. We, we are doing a circulation study to address this and we have the same concern. We, we don't want to have confusion on how this operates. And I know Charlie and Muriel are commissioning a study right now to figure out how the best circulation goes, so.
So have you bought the property yet? Has it been sold?
We're under contract. We'll
So I have a little, this is in regards to sidewalks and street, a little thing that I want to bring up. So on the south side of the, of Christie Avenue is the Bay Street project. And I'm sure everyone's walked that little corner there, coming from Shellmount, and it's awful. And it's, you couldn't even, I don't even know if you can get a wheelchair through there. Honestly, I'm not sure.
Which corner? Sorry.
Pretty, so it's the southeast, wait, is that correct? Southeast corner of Christie and
Shellmount.
Shellmount.
Take your point right there.
Southeast.
And at the corner of the building there too.
At the corner of Bay Street. So it's not, it's not your property, but it is, you are in that intersection, okay? Or the, the retail pod will be, so the, the retail pod will, in front will be also, it's, will be next to that intersection and you aren't behind it. Or to the east of it. So the problem in, going forward in the future is if we were ever to make that sidewalk on the, on the south side wider, we would need to ever so slightly jog Christie Avenue and that would affect the retail pod and might affect your front southwest corner of your project. Does that, is anyone following me? Are you, Charlie, do you have any?
You're talking about that very narrow sidewalk that's along Shellmount and then when you get to that corner, you're talking about if we, if that corner gets improved in the future, it's going to change the
It's going to change the width of the street because obviously the building's already there. So here's our, here's our one chance. The retail pod in front or pad is not created yet. And here you guys are. And I want to make sure that that intersection is, is usable for pedestrians because that is a future well-used pedestrian intersection as well as, as it is now. And so I'm not really certain what needs to happen and if there's a traffic study that needs to be done and that needs to be included, does that?
Well, we can ask our traffic consultant to look at that.
Yeah.
So you're, you're talking about the, the distance between the edge of the building and the curb?
You come down into Bay Street a little more, right in through there. It's very tight right in through there.
Right in through there, yes.
It's very bad.
So it's, it's basically, it's between the retail pad and the Bay Street is, is the real issue, but it may affect ever so slightly that southwest corner of your property if we do so. That is, that's a big issue and that needs to be looked at because it's a problem. And we don't want to make that problem going forward. That being said, on the south, your south side of the property, where we're looking at needing possibly 12-foot sidewalks, I don't necessarily know that that's necessary because, I don't think it is necessary because no one's walking, hardly anyone's walking into the parking garage. It's mostly going to be going across to Bay Street back and forth. The frontage along the Bay Street side is going south, north to south, that should be a nice sidewalk though because that is the future development. So that would be my take on that. And I, I do, I'm concerned about the, making the turn into the, you know, into the, the parking circle and do we need to have a left turn pocket? I'm not sure. Yeah. So more verticality, more urban nature, less, it's very confused. It's very, it's like a whole bunch of stuff tacked on and it, and it reads really squatty. And I think it could be the fenestration and, and the entire, the whole thing could be more elegant in, in its aesthetic.
Would you mind if I asked, when you say urban, are there images or what, what do you mean by more urban in your, in your mind?
So this is very, I think Mr. Sudeesh said, this is, this has a, a lot of horizontality to it. It's very prairie, very, you know, suburban, right? You drive, you park in the big parking lot, you get out, everything's kind of spread out everywhere. Here we are, we're a little over one square mile. We want to see more vertical, more elevated. It's very tight. We have Bay Street on one side, a future who knows what on the other. And I think having more ascending character to this, to this project would make it a better experience aesthetically. That's, does that, is that
Yeah, no, that is, yeah, yeah, I, I understand. I mean, unfortunately with this site, the limitation has been, we can't, we can't build over here or over here. So I, I, I actually think it's urban having the edge on the street and hiding the parking back behind a suburban
Oh, I like that too.
Model might be more in front, you know?
Yeah, I mean, if we're even, the simplest thing we could talk about would be just the surface treatments could be better. I'm not talking about, you could raise the building up. I don't, not sure actually if you could, but
Not really.
Yeah, you're at the max. But the surface treatment of, basically you look at the wind, the fenestration, it's very square, if not, it's kind of a little off-square. So no, it's pretty much square.
You know, one thing, one thing to note, if I could respond just briefly, unfortunately the renderings don't show it that well, but in these window zones, the way this works is there's, there's a vertical glass here, there's a window, then there's a metal panel in which the air conditioning units are all self-sufficient, sit inside the room. That's going to be pushed back. We're going to get much more shadow line than is shown here today in this rendering. It was just left out on this one, but that may help give some more vertical as you see the shadows pick up on your, on your vertical lines of those windows, is a thought.
Can I just ask a question of protocol? I mean, are we, are we asking questions or of the presenter or, I mean, right now we're doing a back and forth and is that, is that what we're?
Yeah, you're, I mean, you're giving your comments. You're giving your opinions.
But we're also getting the, sort of, the responses at this time.
Right. It's a dialogue.
Okay.
That's fine. This is a noticed public meeting, so feel free to express your opinions as much as you wish.
I think if I just pipe out, and what she's saying about urban, and I agree that not having the parking and having the building there, I think it's the interaction of the base of the building with the people on the street. And again, what you're talking about with the vents of the air conditioning, I think that just adds to break it up again. And I think the, the base is, is too broken up. I think to be more urban is to be more unified, more simplified. And, and if you could do that and then
And pedestrian
Friendly.
Friendly. Yeah. Pedestrian, attractive, pedestrian
Engaging.
Engaging.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, I really wish you had done a rendering of the corner of Christie and Shellmount, seeing that corner of the building and maybe in future renderings that would
Christie and Shellmount?
Yeah, so looking northeast.
So farther distance away, looking at it?
This is, this is basically standing at Christie and Shellmount.
Oh, okay. Yeah, 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 I'm sorry.
Oh, down Bay Street, you mean?
No, well, this is standing along
This is, this is basically
This is standing along
Any right here.
Shellmount here.
Looking this way.
Is that right?
No, it's on Christie.
Yeah, so, yeah, okay. No, you're right.
The majority of people that see it are going to be driving down, they're going to be more in the middle of that intersection that's up, yeah, up there looking at it from that angle.
Looking at it. Because of the way traffic is routed off the freeway, you, it's
Right.
Very focused that direction, as opposed to anyway, yeah. That's it for now.
Before I give my comments, I, I have a few questions for staff. The, in the, so in the, what is it, the Shellmount Street Design Guidelines? Is that the
Right.
The thing that requires the 12-foot sidewalks? So within that 12 feet, are there, are there different zones established or is it just 12 feet? Or is there like a, is there a place where you're supposed to put street furniture and another place where you're supposed to have a path of travel and that kind of thing?
Yeah, yeah, there's, actually, I believe we were looking at the pedestrian priority zone of the general plan and referencing the citywide design guidelines for pedestrian priority zones. But I believe it's eight feet of clear pedestrian pathway and four feet of planter zone between the pathway, pedestrian pathway and the curb.
Okay.
There's a di, there's a cross-section in the, in the design guidelines that shows how it's supposed to be laid out.
Okay. And then the parking, so there, there is excess parking at, at Bay Street that, I mean, was that part of previous entitlements or that?
Well, that will be part of the traffic study to determine whether or not there is sufficient excess parking.
But the, so what was, when Bay Street was constructed, the, the parking requirement was based on what?
It was based on the zoning regulations that were in effect at the time.
Okay.
But there's also a condition of approval on the Bay Street PUD that says a shared parking arrangement can be considered if, you know, there's sufficient parking available and a parking management plan is put in place.
Okay. And then what, what is the requirement for bike parking? I, I see they have 10 long-term spaces located in the back, but what is, and I assume that meets the requirement, but what's the short-term parking, bike parking requirement?
Short, short-term and long-term bike parking are the same and they're dependent on the required auto parking. So it is one, if I remember correctly, it's one per 10 auto parking spaces. So one bicycle space for every 10 required auto parking, parking spaces for both long-term and short-term.
Okay. So are they, so when the bike parking then is calculated based on the auto parking, are they required to take into account the 100 spaces that are, that they're sharing or?
Yes, I would, that's the way I would interpret that. Because that is what they're being provided, whether it's shared or not is immaterial. It is in context with how much, you know, how much traffic there is going to be to the site, not where it's being provided.
Okay, okay, thanks. Okay, so I have some comments. So I want to actually emphatically agree with everything that Commissioner Kumari said, which allows me to focus on some other things. So I, I do, I love, I mean, not that we're really discussing that because it's already approved, but I, I love the use of, of the project. I think this is a great, great location for a hotel. It's where, you know, it's where I would probably want to stay if I came to Emeryville. And, you know, the retail pad location looks good, but that said, I, I have a lot of concerns about the site plan and about the, the architecture. So first, my first concern about the site plan is that I, I think this, these two sites together have a really great opportunity to, to put a really strong end cap on Bay Street and, and to really make that an important feature. I think, you know, the, the view, that there's a huge view corridor down Bay Street. I think a lot of people tend to start at the other end of Bay Street and, and walk down it towards this direction. And there's, I think there's a huge opportunity to create a really great outdoor space there. And it's disappointing to me that we've instead just used it as access and turned it into a, a big drop-off roundabout. And also, I'm, I have some concerns about how the roundabout is positioned. I think, it, it seems to me like the, the retail pad, you know, may or may not utilize the roundabout. They probably don't need that as a drop-off, you know, depending on what that future user They probably don't need that as a drop-off, you know, depending on what that future user is. It seems to me that most, you know, most retail establishments would function just fine with the, you know, really the one major accessible street furniture along Christie and then the other one, you know, not very accessible but great for visibility along Shell Mound. And I'm concerned that you've placed the... While you've taken more than half of this roundabout, you've positioned it in such a way that it really leaves an odd-shaped retail pad left over. And I'm really concerned with the usability of that retail space. So I would really encourage you to look at, you know, sort of look at the totality of the site plan and the layout and see if there's a better way to do that rather than sort of pushing the problem onto somebody else. I'm going to propose an idea. I've heard a couple other commissioners say that they weren't really concerned about the 12-foot sidewalk south of... Or I guess it's not really south, it's whatever, east of Bay Street, yeah. And I would tend to agree. However, I am going to propose an idea, which is that we sort of require as much space as a 12-foot sidewalk and then identify, or at least, you know, at least for half of that area, require as much space as a 12-foot sidewalk and then identify that as a future space for future bike share pod. When that... Because inevitably, that system that's being implemented now in San Francisco and in the South Bay, the same system will be expanded to the East Bay. And I think that would be a perfect location for it. I mean, Bay Street is obviously going to need one and I think that would be a perfect location for it. And I would also stress that I think the bike parking... I think we all know that Bay Street doesn't have enough bike parking existing. And so I think the bike parking needs to be located along Christie somewhere, but definitely near the front of the building. I think as close to Bay Street as possible. I think that's where it's going to be best utilized. I'm really less concerned about hotel guests having bike storage because they're, you know... Although I have taken my bike with me when I've stayed in a hotel before and not had a place to lock it up. I don't think that's a common problem. I'm more concerned about providing additional bike parking for existing Bay Street patrons. And then building height, I think you've heard... Well, I'm just going to say, the building height is not really an issue to me. I'm not... I understand that you've tried to make it the same height as everything else. I don't think... I don't sense that we're really super concerned about that. So if that gives you some flexibility to do other things, I think we might be willing to entertain an increased height. I mean, it's clear you're not maxing out the height that you're allowed already, so that's just food for thought. I'll just talk a little bit about the architecture. To me, it doesn't look like an office building. It looks like a hospital, actually. It looks like... I think you could just put Kaiser Permanente on it and you'd be... And put curtain dividers in the rooms and you'd be good to go. Because you already got your ambulance drop-off too. So that said, I'm not really sure what to do about it. I mean, it's funny, the... I think the little mini shed roof thing is actually probably one of the most interesting aspects of the building. And I don't, you know, sitting here, I just started thinking, you know, maybe... I don't know, maybe that's because the rest of the building isn't that exciting. So I just would encourage you. We had a... Our last meeting, we had another applicant and I gave them the same advice, which is just, we really want to see high-quality materials. Looking at the renderings that you've shown us, I'm really concerned about the materials. And so I would give you the same advice. And, yeah, also, I think, you know, I'll just reiterate, the tower element, I think, needs to be emphasized and also needs to have some better materials on it. And then, just because it's really important to me, I'll just reiterate real quick that I do think that the restaurant should be moved so that it's more on the corner. Because I don't think that that existing outdoor... Or that not existing, but the outdoor area that you've shown, it's too disassociated with the restaurant and everything else that I don't think it's going to be used very well. But I think if you paired it with the cafe, rather. I think if you paired it with the cafe, you would get a lot more usability out of it. So I think that those are my comments for now.
Could I add one more just while I'm... So there's also the thought of bulbouts on the corner of Bay and Christie that are not happening in your drawing, but are on the south corner of Bay Street and want to make sure that it's safe for pedestrians and that that corner is... Has enough room for folks to cross and wait. So, that's it.
Well, my concern is a permanent architectural. And when I look at this nice perspective sketch and then look at the floor plans, they don't match. You have this glass tower, but if you look at your floor plans, the windows don't line up with that at all. And the same with the section over to the left. This is Sheet A 4.0.
We did have an error in our floor plan for that unit.
Well, yeah, but if you look at the next block over, it's... You have... You're showing a whole wall of glass there. But if you look at your floor plans, it's not that way. Yeah, also, on the ground floor at the corner, it doesn't line up with the plans above. You know, it shows a straight wall going through on the ground floor, yet you show it stepping back. You know, if you look at the window arrangements in the rooms, they... It really doesn't... I don't know what that corner suite... I don't know what those rooms are, but one of them would appear to have only one small window in the corner. And, you know, it just, to me, looks like it's very incomplete. And particularly, where you have the icon above, it's all glass. Well, if you look at your floor plans, it's not. It's the same old windows. And, you know, I think... And I think you just have to get it together so there's some continuity in this thing. You know, it looks like we're being sold on all this glass and yet, if you look at the floor plans, it's not there. So, you know, I think that's something that really needs to be worked on.
Well, I mean, it seems like we've got a trend going about having concerns about the architecture. And I would also like to see more verticality in the building. It looks more verticality and more sense of hierarchy. The entry sort of disappears in the renderings that we've got here. You can't quite... It doesn't draw any attention to itself as an entry. I'd like to see a better connection between that corner and the more public and active uses. As other people have said, that the outdoor seating isn't really connected to anything and it's... I don't know that it's going to be very well-used if you've got to take your cup of coffee and go across the lobby and around the corner and out the door to get to it. I think that Commissioner Kummerly's point about a potential shift of Christie Street to make the south side of the sidewalk function better, I thought that was really interesting. And that would be the only reason that I would suggest the 12-foot sidewalk along the hotel building. I think a 12-foot sidewalk is really important between Shell Mound and the Bay Street extension because people will be coming from that direction, walking back and forth. But there's very, very few people that'll be walking along the side of the hotel to the railroad tracks, I hope. So I don't see a need for a wide sidewalk there. But to have the potential to shift the street enough to accommodate whatever needs to be done for the sidewalk and the traffic seems like a really, really good idea. Whatever happens on that corner with the public area and the tower, I'm really looking forward to seeing the simulation, the photo sim, looking down Bay Street at it because that's going to be... There's... It seems that there are going to be two really primary views. One is coming down Christie from that intersection, not standing by the... Not standing on the close corner, but, you know, where the cars come in towards Bay Street. That's a really, really prominent view and that... We need to understand how things are going to look from there. And it needs to... I think it needs to have more interest than what's being shown now on that tower element. And similarly, the view from Bay Street, looking down that way, we really need to understand what it is that you are going to see, whether you are going to be seeing that a red stripe, you know, a red facade or we're going to see a tower of people's curtains closed because it's a bunch of suites with people closing their curtains. I don't know, maybe the fitness center should be on one of those floors so at least you see people doing something over there. The verticality, I like this... I like the idea of making the base really strong, but I do think it needs to have more transparency and more public side towards the side where the public is going to be. And I'm glad that there is going to be a traffic study that will probably give us more information about things like having a left turn pocket, about how that exiting... I think... I do also think it should just be an exit from the eastern side because there's just a lot of conflict there and a lot of people who aren't quite clear on where they're going and are impatient getting out of the garage and all these different potentials for difficult situations. So I'm glad to hear that we're going to have a traffic study on that.
So I wanted to highlight the traffic issue a bit more. I'm probably one of the 17% that uses that entrance quite a bit because I try to avoid some of the more heavily-traveled entrances into Bay Street. And I actually was there a couple days ago. And what I noticed, and I notice every time I go there, is when you're coming down Christie and as it intersects Bay Street, there... Even though I travel that path quite a bit, it still seems to be very confusing. You still have to make a decision of whether you're going to go into the parking structure or whether you're going to go into the metered parking. And what tends to happen is that cars slow down. And then at the same time, there are cars that are coming out of Bay Street to make a left-hand turn. And because of how the corner is situated and I think you're... Yeah. Sort of this point where it pinches down where the pedestrians cross, a lot of times cars run that stop sign or they creep out a little too quickly and then they... There becomes sort of this confusion right at the area where you're going to have cars entering your site. So I think that the traffic impact study is going to be really important in terms of seeing what actually happens at that intersection. Because I think there definitely is a lot going on and there needs to be some consideration for some sort of treatment for the left-hand turn into the roundabout. I think traffic is definitely going to be an issue there because it already is now. And I think also, when, you know, this building is constructed, I think more people will be using that entrance, not necessarily because there's... Because they're frequenting the hotel, but because now there's going to be something there to invite you to see. Right now, when you go there, there's usually an empty lot. And so some people... Most people don't know that there's a way to enter Bay Street onto... Or taking Christie. So now, there's going to be something there that's going to draw their eye, it's going to catch their attention. I think more cars are going to enter Bay Street from that side going forward after that project is built. So that's what I wanted to talk about with regard to the traffic. With regard to the exterior, I mean, my concern is the mixture of materials and the quality of the materials. If you were to have attended the last two or three Planning Commission meetings, really, the focus and the trend is on durable materials. It's on concrete, it's on glass, it's on brick, you know, more industrial, paying homage to the history that we have here in Emeryville for our buildings. And really, there's... The trend is moving away from stucco and plaster and for various reasons. I mean, we see a lot of projects around town where there are water intrusion issues and shrink-wrapped buildings because of problems with stucco failures. So that's a concern there. And there are a lot of materials in the project right now. I mean, we're looking at stone, brick, engineered wood, metal panel, glass, stucco, a green wall. So it seems like there's a lot going on and that's already been expressed by the rest of the commission here. But I would say simplifying the design is... Would be... Would really go a long way towards solving some of these issues. And then the long-term constructability of it, the long-term maintenance of all these different facades and all these different textures and materials. So seeing something more simplified. And then as far as the interior, I mean, I focus mostly on the ground floor. And I think it's... I agree with the DCC comments in that you'll probably have a more active use of the cafe area if it were to be more open to the public. So I'm in agreement with the commissioners who've talked about, you know, maybe swapping that with the meeting room area. And because the flow just is kind of odd. I mean, you're in the bar café, but the patio seating is all the way across the lobby, so you're going to have to walk all the way over there to access the patio. And I think the patio needs to be more open to people who are shopping at Bay Street, for instance. And then with the meeting rooms, if that gets swapped with where that sunroom area is, perhaps you can then dedicate a small area outside where you have the door exiting from the sunroom to have a private patio for the conference room function there and so that they can have their meals there if they choose to do so. Just making it a little bit more flexible. I think there is a way to do that. I understand you have a challenge with where the food prep is located. But I think that that's something that can be worked with. And what else? I think it's great having the peer review and having their comments. I think that that's very constructive. I think having the more... I agree with the rest of the commissioners with regard to the verticality, just having more vertical elements as opposed to horizontal. Right now, there's just a lot going on and it just needs to maybe be just more simplified. And then with regard to the room layout, I hadn't noticed what Commissioner Cardoza noticed with regard to the windows not lining up. So that definitely needs to be addressed. It's very schematic right now and I understand that. But I think the next time we see this proposal, we'll want to see more of that developed. And I liked Commissioner Donaldson's idea of maybe putting the fitness room on that side of the building so that you could see, you know, more... It would activate that area more. You would be able to see people in, you know, things happening inside the hotel as opposed to drawn curtains, which would more than likely happen if there were just hotel rooms there. I think that's all I have for now.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what I've heard already. I do feel like this site... It's in an area, traffic-wise, pedestrian-wise, it has a number of issues. And it seems like this is an opportunity to try to resolve some of those. Commissioner Kummerly's comments about that corner on the northwest corner of Bay Street and coming around that corner, there's three pinch spots that make it... I mean, I've run into other people just coming around that corner on the sidewalks. And if there's a way to push that out and use this opportunity and the retail pad opportunity to fix that, address that issue. And then also, I don't... I mean, I don't know if any of us know what's going to happen on the lot to the north of this. But the depth of that lot means that there's going to need to be some kind of traffic pattern through there. I mean, this is the depth of the entire Bay Street complex. And so I'm wondering if Bay Street won't eventually continue through this roundabout and through that lot to the north and meet Shell Mound at some point further north for, you know, a number of different reasons. And so just making sure that that flexibility exists with this design. And to kind of continue on... And to kind of continue on Commissioner Cardoza's comments, that gets to the floor plan of the, of the ground floor. When you show the ground floor plan, and you show the profile, the second floor coming out over the driveway, and towards the north, and then the four columns picking it up, that doesn't seem to match what I see on the rendering, which seems to, seems to show the, seems to show the first floor sort of wrapping around the turnabout and extending out further to the west there. And just making sure that whatever happens there, and as much as we acknowledge the roundabout, that we also maybe acknowledge the possibility that in the future, this is a throughway connection. I, I see that fountain or at the center of the roundabout maybe as the opportunity for public art, that doesn't feel tacked on, but actually feels sort of monumental and intentional. Regarding the plans, I agree with most of the commissioners who've mentioned that just taking, taking that corner and making that the space where the café is, the, the exercise space possibly. I mean, not only does it help sort of engage Bay Street, but also, it's the southern exposure there, and so, you know, a meeting room where you're going to, half the time, you're going to have a PowerPoint presentation going on and the blinds down, isn't necessarily what you want at that corner. I think you'd want something where people do want the light, the sun coming in, the brightness, and, and creating a greater sense of entry. Right now, the step-down approach, where you've got these multiple little boxes that drop down to one that's basically a single story, doesn't really create that sense of entry. One thing I saw on the rear rendering that, that I kind of liked, was the sort of, it seems like one of the nicer materials you're using is this red stone material, whatever it is, stone cladding, and, and the way that you create a pedestal with the, with the elements on top. I don't know, I, actually, when you come around to the south side, it seems like that's where the south rendering there, you start to play with it a little bit, and it starts to volumetrically get a little nicer. And then having these towers of the red material continuing up, I think that's an opportunity that you might be able to take around to the west side and actually help improve the west side elevation. I do feel like there's just too many, too many things going on, and maybe narrowing it down to a few of what you've got. Not a big fan of the bookend walls that you show, that show up at a couple of locations to different volumes. It's just, it seems like a move that was done a lot in, like, late 80s hotels. I do agree that if we need the wedge, then making the wedge, you know, the shed roof maybe at the corner. And I think that's, those are my primary comments.
I have just one more, and that is on the east side, that area, the roof area that's going to be visible from a lot of the hotel rooms, and also from the terraces, and from whatever gets built on the pad to the north. I would put a pitch in for green roofing up there, for a green roof treatment of some sort. I think that would make it really nice.
I also have a comment about, I guess it's the conditioning equipment that you have adjacent to the windows, which is this kind of little striped panel. I think that's singularly unattractive, and you don't show it in some cases, and you do show it in other cases, and...
Are those louvers?
It's like, there's so many things that are inaccurate on these drawings, that I think that needs to be, we need to see something that's consistent.
Are those louvers?
Yeah, it would be a metal louvered system.
Okay.
I have one other comment, too, and that is that Hyatt House, I think, is far and away the nicest-looking hotel in Emeryville. And so I would just encourage you to sort of take your cues from that. I know it wasn't built as, you know, with Hyatt House in mind, but I think it's, not only, I think, is that, is, not only is that, is that a nicer-looking hotel, I think it's, since this is envisioned as a Hyatt, I think it has the potential to be confusing to the customer as well, in that, you know, they're going to see this really nice-looking hotel, nice-looking extended-stay hotel, just, you know, practically next door, and then, you know, a not, not as nice Hyatt-branded hotel.
It's one of the tallest-built hotels.
It is, too. That's true. It is, it's noticeable, but I think even if it was shorter, it would still be very, very handsome.
It's a handsome building.
Yes.
And maybe to give you more direction, the, in the committee meeting, you seemed really proud of the hotel in Pennsylvania that just opened up.
Mm-hmm.
And if you look at the style of that, it's very modern, it's very clean, it doesn't have all the articulation up and down and in and out. That's, from what I could see from the one picture, it's very curvilinear, it's very smooth, and I'm not saying to do that here, but that's just, to me, an idea of something that's more urban, more modern than what we're seeing here. So, just to kind of give you an idea of the two differences, that's something I would use as kind of a reference point.
Or even the one that you showed before that one. I forget where that was.
Long Beach?
Yeah, the Long Beach, the high-rise.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't know if I said it before, but I'll say it again, I agree with the green roof. I think that would be a really great amenity for folks looking down from all directions on the, above the first floor space.
Is the building height a function of construction types?
Yep. It's a function of construction type, and also the size of the hotel. We're at 170 keys, plus or minus one or two, and that is, that's about as big as you can build these Hyatt places, and this market is what the market's demanding here, so. You could go 200 feet, but it's not what the hotel market is telling us to do here, so.
I think that was in the day when there was to be a condominium on top of the hotel.
Oh, yeah? Really? Okay, gotcha. I wanted to clarify one thing, because I forgot to mention in my presentation, but that roundabout is an existing easement. So I do want to just clarify that in this location, there are two separate parcels that will ultimately be owned by two separate companies, and there is an easement on record that extends from Christie to the property line to the north, so that future connectivity is 100% there, and I would imagine envisioned if Madison develops Site B, but regardless, there is the ability to drive from here to here, so just to clarify.
So you own half of it, but you have an easement over the other half of it?
We, yeah, we, I think our property line falls in the mid, and we ease it back as a driveway.
Let me just add a little bit to that. Madison Marquette is proposing to move that easement a little bit, because right now, it doesn't really line up with the rest of Bay Street. It's offset a little bit to the west. It's not really in the location where this drawing shows, I don't think. And our Public Works Director has expressed concern that when that easement does get relocated, which will require an action by the Planning Commission as part of the approved subdivision map for Bay Street, that the shape of the new easement should reflect the shape of the roundabout, so that the public will have access, legal access, to use the full roundabout, and not just the middle of it. So that will be coming back to you, I believe, in conjunction with the hotel application, but it will be a separate application.
So Madison Marquette is under no obligation to allow access through that to Parcel B?
Yes, they are.
Oh, they are?
That's what that easement is. It's a public-access easement in favor of the city for full public access from Christie Avenue North to Parcel B.
Oh.
They're just proposing to move it a little bit.
And make it a roundabout now, because there's no development in Site B.
And bulb it out for the roundabout.
Right.
Right.
Is that difference, isn't, I thought the Bay Street between Christie and whatever, Aloney, was a public street, but the sidewalks were in an easement? Is that correct?
It's confusing. The roadway where the cars drive, there is a easement, a public easement over that. So it's basically, it's owned by Madison Marquette, but there's a public easement over the roadway, so that where the cars drive is public. There is no similar easement that covers the sidewalks. So the sidewalks are private, and the roadway is public. It's an unusual situation.
So it would appear that cars arriving at the hotel would stop on the public street, so people would go in to check in and then come out and park their car.
Well, they could pull over, pull over to the curb, yeah. Pull over to the curb and stop for a few minutes, go into the hotel.
So, given that the eas, so given that then there is this planned public easement, and they're proposing a roundabout, does, did Public Works staff or did any other city staff have any concerns about the roundabout, given that, that easement, you know, may some, the, the public street, the public street with the easement over it, whatever, may someday go through to Site B?
That's the intent.
That's the intent, so there, but there were no concerns? I mean, to me, it's, it seems like then an odd place to put a roundabout.
Yeah.
Well, that's what they're proposing. I mean, I think part, part of the thing is that it's unknown right now what's going to happen with Site B. You know, Site B is in our property management plan, which we have to finish and have the City Council and Oversight Board approve and send off to the state, and then the state has to approve it, and they have no time limit for approving it. And eventually, we'll, they'll tell us what we can do with Site B. So Site B is a huge question mark at this point. I think what they're trying to do here is to make that public easement be usable, whether or not Site B develops in such a way that that easement would be needed. So you can drive up to this terminus in Bay Street and turn around and go back the other way if you had to.
Yeah. I guess, my, my comment would just be, even without, even without it going through to Site B, or if it goes through to Site B, the roundabout seems really unnecessary, and it just seems like a waste of pavement.
Well, it's kind of nice if that's a dead end, to have a loop around to get out again, but...
I believe, I believe they're proposing a fountain or some kind of similar feature in the middle, it would create kind of an entry feature.
It's a nice visual terminus.
Otherwise, you're going onto private property to get out of there. You'd have to back up and...
I will say, though, that I've seen different diagrams from Madison Marquette that have shown different configurations of that roundabout. So clearly, they've got to decide where exactly it's going to be and what exactly it's going to look like before the Planning Commission can be asked to approve a relocated easement.
And Charlie, speaking of the fountain in the roundabout, I'd like to go on record that we, we don't do a fountain. Every water feature we have in this town is non-operated. The one at Bay Street, I haven't seen operating in the last couple of days. The one at Doyle Hollis Park hasn't operated, the one at...
That's because we're having a drought.
Yeah, so that's, that's the point I'm getting to, is that in California, this may be the norm and not the exception. And I think what we need to do is plan for that and do something like an art piece, a planting mound, something else that I think we should just go on record and say that a fountain is just not something we should consider.
In defense of Madison, we actually dropped the fountain in in some earlier renderings, and I don't know what Madison is planning to do there, but we had...
Could be like that plastic that, you know, looks like water.
I think you can do fountains with sort of sculpture elements in the middle that look fine when they're turned off, so, you know.
But an empty fountain doesn't look good, no matter what's in the middle of it.
Charlie?
Empty, yeah, but if, yeah.
Sorry, it's late.
Charlie, I have a question. Before this comes back to us for consideration, for approval, is that traffic study going to be done? The questions that I raised about potentially adjusting the width or the placement of the street, is that, can that happen?
Oh, the traffic study will definitely be done before we bring this back to you.
Can that, and that, can we get that in there, too?
Yeah, we'll ask them to take a look at that.
Okay. All right.
Any further comment?
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
I look forward to seeing the next version.
Hopefully, this year.
That's a good idea.
Soon.
It'll be soon.
Great.
Next time...